But certainly one option that we could consider. I mean, as the gentleman was going through this, I was starting to think a little bit about, obviously you have immunity through the political subdivision for Claims Act, but there are some real property exceptions. So, I guess, as we kind of move through this process, that's one of the issues that we'll look at is ultimately whether it's the quicker solution for you to simply deed the land outright. I mean, I am noticing that there's a little bit of a proximity to your baseball stadium, so I don't know whether or not there might be some maintenance issues that we might want to retain, but those are things that we can talk through and make a decision about. But your points will take care.
Yeah. That, I agree, that might make it easier overall. That's a good idea.
So, for the sake of tonight, though, this is giving them permission to kind of move forward with her?
Yeah. If we would still want to. Sure. I mean, it seems like there's still an open question about whether ultimately we'd be just simply giving them the land or entering into some agreement with them wherein we'll allow them to construct these berms and the pipe and accept maintenance obligations and a bunch of other things, but, you know, at the very least, what you're doing tonight would be to authorize them to sort of move this process forward without any commitment by the district either to entering into an agreement or to donating or deeding the land, but those are both still options, I think, that would make sense to consider.
So, we don't have to amend this motion, because it says that it's pending final review for the solicitor, so.
Yeah. I mean, the project may end up being, you own the land and they do it on your land, or the project might end up being, give them the land and let them do it that way.
Right.
So, I think you have flexibility, as it's written, to go either way with this.
Once these berms are built, the land's going to be purpose for the floodwater project, and the floodwater project's to protect the community, not the district, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And as it was stated, at this point, we don't want to authorize our engineer to move forward with design if the board isn't in concurrence with the concept of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Corazie.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, John. John.
I'm going to, we don't have any other questions.
I had just one more question on number seven. Is there anything driving the timing where we have to vote or accept something like this now, rather than table it for the next executive meeting?
The only thing driving it from my perspective, from the time sense, is that we would want to try to, that's a lot of, one, we'd have to award the job through state contract, and then they'd have to do it, which I think we'd want them to do it over the summer. So, my only concern is, you know, this isn't just one little area, this is quite a few of our areas of each one of our buildings. So, my only thing is, is you don't want to put it behind and start a school by the time they get to it. That was my concern. That's why.
Mr. Means had a question for me. I thought it'd be best to address everyone on this. The one page that you have looks like this. The orange lines are the property lines. You can, faintly is shown on there, but the municipality of Bethel Park owns everything to the south, and the school district owns everything to the north. I just threw those in for reference.
Okay, the other lines are just subdivisions?
Yeah, there's, for whatever reason, there's a couple different parcels that the municipality owns.
Okay.
It's not all one parcel.
If that's, anything else? Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Appreciate your time as well. Okay, do I have five members willing to move item seven onto the agenda then before we pass it off to Ron? Yes.
For seven?
It's on the agenda.
Should we just withhold it, hold it, and vote separately?
Number seven.
Because it's already on the agenda.
Well, he can hold it out and we don't have to vote on it. I mean, we don't have to move, it's not on the agenda per se, we're, this is a combined meeting, so in essence, it's kind of, we're in that.
Oh, okay. I would recommend, wait, I still had a lot of questions about, kind of, the lifetime cost, maintenance, and things like that.
Are we looking at the Chromebooks?
Courtney?
I'm in the wrong. Oh, okay. I got in the wrong place, okay.
So, do I?
I guess the question, I mean, based on that, I mean, other buildings, not here in the district, but other school districts or anything else, do they, this has been proven technology, right?
As I said, this is what's been recommended by, you know, research and brought to my attention from the school police officers, or something that, that we would want to do. And I'm not guaranteeing it would be done by school, but that'd be the goal. My concern is, isn't a project that big if we waited longer? So, it just kind of came to me, and I said, well, one, it would have to be bid unless it's on state contract. We believe it will be on state contract, so the exact product they were looking for, because we didn't want a similar product if it wasn't the product that they were saying would be effective. But they said the product seemed to be on there, right, Mr. Corazie, on the state contract? So, it's just going to come down, the not to exceed really is coming down to the exact footage area that we're covering, which, again, isn't everything, but it's in the key areas as deemed by the school police officers.
So, if we do like, we. This came from the six school police officers, or from the?
Five, yeah.
Five?
Yep.
In the police liaison for the borough.
Yeah, our four school police officers and then our school resource officers.
Yeah.
That's who brought it to me, and Mr. Corazie, and said, would there be any way that we could do this, that we would feel strongly about it?
Is this, the application of this, the actual project, how intrusive is it if we don't get it done before the beginning of the school year? Is it something like, yeah, I'd like to have this conversation in executive session also.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. It probably is, but I'd like to discuss it more with a hundred thousand dollars.
But I'm just saying, if we pull it off, then it won't be till June, so.
In the future, I think anything like this should be put on the agenda in the most generic terms possible, because if, yeah, but I mean, even the discussion in public, people did know what was going on there, because I heard about it before, but anytime you're letting information out there about what's a hard area or a soft area, regardless of whether you're talking about windows, doors, security procedures, whatever, it, I think it's highly unlikely somebody would attack our school district, but if they would decide to, any information like that can be used against you, so.
That's why I didn't want it to happen.
It's a difficult one, I mean, that's very true, but the other side is, you have to vote on it in order to be able to do it, too, so, I mean, it's just kind of.
That's why I'm keeping it low-key, but get the vote in the name of safety for the kids, you know, you're looking at trying to get it through, but not giving details out to the public as to what.
But asking the solicitor, could we put something like this on, say, a hundred thousand dollars for increased security measures at the high school, or something generic like that?
Yeah, I mean, I do think that you have to be able to say with specificity what it is you're buying, unless you could say credibly that just disclosing the product that you're buying would impair school safety. So, something like that, kind of of two minds, I mean, I'm inclined to say, you could probably identify the product without saying where the product's going, without saying where the product's going to do, without necessarily comparing school safety with that particular product. There are other situations, though, where I could absolutely foresee that you would want to describe it in a more general fashion.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Ron then, and we'll hold off on number seven, so you won't be moving that item.
If we could do this, we had mentioned before, there may be a chance we have another interim voting meeting, if we could maybe share some of the information on the product, what the plans are, and then even add it to that meeting, if it's urgent to get started.
What we can add to that meeting, but I understand what you're saying. And we could put it on the committee meeting, we could make that a.
And just vote on it there a week early.
Earlier.
But this would not be made public, as to the product and all the details of it, and the caliber bullet it can withstand, and all this other crap, I mean, we don't need to.
Okay, you're talking too much now, too.
Right. That's exactly right, I mean, geez. Okay. So then, that means we will have, let me here, so we have seven items, we're going to hold out number seven.
We're not moving six, seven at all, it's off the agenda, we did not move it towards this, to this agenda.
Six items.
Oh, so we're just going to get seven off completely. All right.
So, we have six items under facilities and services for approval. Do I hear any others being held out? No.
Is there anyone, one anything held out from one through six on facilities and services? Is anybody okay with that? You can move them all together, then, Mr. Workmeister.
All right. Item one is Peter Page Park Stormwater Project. Number two is the awarding of the paving and ceiling bid. Number three, purchase of utility tractor. Number four is purchase of floor scrubbers. Number five is carpet for Memorial Elementary School and Independence Middle School, and number six is lights for Bethel Park High School swimming pool.
Second.
Items one through six under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Workmeister and seconded by Mr. Means. All in favor of these items, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Any questions on anything under the Finance Committee? There are fifteen items under Finance Committee this evening.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
I asked this earlier in executive session, could, could, Corazie, could you talk a little bit about the way that we're going to be approving the final budget, maybe in June now, rather than today?
I apologize, I can't hear anything over there.
So, there were a few things that came up during the budget process, during my last budget, and I wasn't quite ready to finalize it yet, so I asked Dr. Pasquarel if we could just pull it off and wait till next, wait till June.
And then, number eleven, if, Mr. Ryer, can you talk a little bit about the purchase of all of those computers?
I'm sure. The Chromebooks? Yes. So, the Chromebooks that we've been using in grades K through six were purchased five years ago, and when we purchased them, we intended to use them for four years, and so we've actually used them for five years. And when Google introduces a Chromebook model through a vendor, you know, whether it's Dell, or HB, or whoever, they establish at the beginning of when they introduce it, how long they'll support it. And that length of support for Chromebooks, it started out being four years, but then they increased it to five years, and now, if you buy a new Chromebook, you can buy it with six years of lifetime support, but you can't buy it with more than that. So, these Chromebooks, we got the maximum amount of supportable time out of them that was available, which was five years, and they need to be replaced. So, what does that mean, that we can't get support? It means that they'll no longer be updated, and that they may not be manageable under the Google Chrome Admin Console with some unpredictable time during the year, and so they need to be replaced. So, the, what we're doing a little differently, though, is instead of buying Chromebooks K six, we're buying Chromebooks in grades two through six, and in grades K one, we're replacing the Chromebooks with iPads that have keyboard cases on them. And so, the iPads, I think, are going to be more appropriate for our younger kids who can't type yet, but if the teachers want to teach them, or, you know, introduce them to typing, they can do so using the keyboards on the cases. The, we did survey our teachers and found an overwhelming response in support of iPads for K one, and they'll be in a, you know, at a little bit less, same ratios the Chromebooks are in K one right now. So, that's the, that's the extent of the information on the computers.
And it looks as if we're going to be able to recycle the old Chromebooks and get some cash for them?
We are, we're able to recycle the old Chromebooks. So, for a quantity of 2,200, and that quantity is, you know, tentative, based on how many whole units we have to turn back in, we are going to be able to receive about $43,000 for the parts for the old Chromebook.
Is the software transition between the first graders and the second graders, I know Apple and everything else is kind of, different platforms, different, different learning curves, is that going to cause a hiccup between first and second grade?
I think because the iPads have a browser built into them as well, and the students can start transitioning into the browser-based applications that are used in, you know, beyond first grade, that the transition won't be so difficult.
Yeah. Are you still considering transitioning to the PC type?
Well, I'm interested in talking about it, at least for our.
This is a PC, and I just click on the Chrome, and I can bring up everything I do in my Chromebook.
Right.
And it has the flexibility of doing everything you can with a PC, too, so.
Yes. I mean, we have another replacement next year that we'll be talking about this time for grades eight through 12.
Okay.
So, with the timing behind, like, these Chromebooks, does that fit in with the original timing, the life expectancy, or is it a surprise one way or another? Do we get less years, more years?
Well, no, we're stretching, we've got one more year than we planned.
Okay.
And we'll be getting one more year than we planned out of the ones that are currently in use at the high school in eighth grade.
Okay. Okay, good.
Any other?
Item number six, softball tournament. I just wanted to make some quick comments on that, because I think it was worth noting. I had talked with Mr. George Reganick, and he gave me a lot of information about what they were doing. First of all, I commend them on that, it sounds like a very worthwhile, you know, function that they're doing with softball field, but they're also taking care of all the behind-the-scenes things that's helping with this cost issue, that's, you know, going to be where they're going to do the custodial work, they have security being hired, they've got even a, what do you call it, an EMT being there on site, and trash cleaning up, all that stuff. So, they're running the whole show there, so it's something that, you know, it sounds like they're doing a real good job there on it, and I wish them well, I hope it's going to be a dry day.
Nice day, yeah. Any other?
I have a question about number 14. I was just wondering why this Roth extension, did somebody ask for it, this Roth feature? Because I thought there was a limited number of 403 companies that we deal with.
A couple of people asked for it, and it's just a different type of 403B, so we're not adding any vendors. Basically, what the difference between a 403B and a Roth 403B is how it's taxed. The Roth 403Bs taxed when, right away, the other 403Bs are taxed when you take it out.
So, is this for everybody to be able to?
That's for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Any other finance questions? Mrs. Rule, can I turn finance over to you this evening?
Okay. On finance, okay, there are fifteen items under finance. Are there any that anyone wants to be held up? If not, I move that we approve, one, May 2019 salaries and bills, two, April 2019 financial report, three, budgetary transfers, four, approval of still center for career and technical education budgets, five, approval of student services contracts, six, softball tournaments, seven, items declared unused and unnecessary, eight, Chromebook recycling disposal proposal, nine, purchase of cafeteria tables for Memorial Elementary School, ten, acceptance of a donation, eleven, approval of purchase of information technology equipment 2018-19 budget, item 12, approval of contract extension for district telephone system, and thirteen, fuel contract with the AIU, fourteen, resolution to add Roth 403B feature to a 403B tax-deferred annuity plan document, and fifteen, contracts of Ford consulting services.
Need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through 15 under finance have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. All in favor of these items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Policy Committee, I'll just turn that over to you, Mr. Means, some are readings and some are final. If you want to have the discussion with the board, please.
Can we just handle number one and take the vote, and then announce the second, too? Would that be okay?
Yep.
Okay. Policy number one, third and final reading, the Board of Directors approved the administration's recommendation to approve policy 815, acceptable use of Internet, computers, and network resources. So, I move that we vote on that?
I need a second.
Second?
Sir.
Item one under policy has been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Rule. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I'd like to, I brought up a couple things about it last meeting, about it, that make me uncomfortable with some of the.
Did they not revise that in the revised?
With, and things have been added to it since then, so, just a couple things, I know that the signer-user agreement is signed by the students and by the parents, but I guess I'm just concerned that, you know, if parents use this computer that's at home, you know, it could cause some problems. I know you're not supposed to share your password and things like that, but, you know, just maybe something on that agreement that the parents sign, so that they know they should not be using their student's device for any reason whatsoever. And then, I'm a little concerned about some of the specifics that have been added on page eight, about no buying or selling and things like that, so, say someone is, you know, wants to buy something on Amazon, you know, I think that it could be used in a punitive, the policy could be used in a punitive fashion to punish people for something that is something simple, such as buying something on Amazon. But even so, I think that as part of what the staff should realize specifically is that, you know, they can't, they can't be doing anything like that on a district device, and that they should not be logging into the Wi-Fi system with their phones or their own personal devices, because what used to be just sort of a, I don't know, a friendly agreement, looks to me to be a way to create a punitive policy, particularly on page eight, of this, of this particular policy, so, that's all I have to say.
Well, I guess, kind of to that point, why wouldn't we just block that through the firewall and just not let people access those sites? I mean, otherwise, the enforcement's going to be subjective. I think that's kind of your point. It will be subjective sometimes, and, you know, one way or the other.
But you're saying, why don't they have it at home?
Why don't just block, you know, Amazon and things like that through the firewall?
Like, who are you going to target for accessing something?
Right.
And how are you going to target them? I don't know, maybe Mr. Ryer can talk a little bit about that, too. I don't know, is that your, is that your language that's in the policy? Did you add that language?
I was, I was adding what I thought was being asked at. And so, yes, the district can block sites through the firewall, and there's categorically, you can, you know, check a box for shopping sites. Is it 100% effective? Does it capture all shopping sites? Are there some sites that might manifest as shopping sites, but also be potentially educational, or could teachers want to use some shopping sites for educational purposes? Maybe. So, I think that, you know, if I'm directed to do that, I'll do it.
Yeah, I think that, listen, if we're saying it's bad, and we don't allow it, we shouldn't allow it. I mean, otherwise, how do you inform it? Your policy's going to have to be 10 pages longer to say what is an acceptable use on those kinds of sites. So, I'd say just block it.
I don't think blocking is that practical, though, I mean, there's so many sites out there, I mean, it's the intent and what you're doing.
Well, I think you'd have a less subjective enforcement issue, because if Amazon's blocked, it's going to be obvious to everybody that they shouldn't be shopping, so if somebody's going to go around, and, you know, whatever the issue is, whatever the kind of site is, if we say that this type of site isn't allowed, and you block the most common ones, it's going to be visible to everybody.
I think that the specific language that may be a question would be, would be item two on page eight, commercial or for-profit purposes, such as selling, reselling, buying on eBay, Craigslist, or other somewhere intended seller-to-buyer site. So, really, it's primarily intended to target people who are trying to engage in for-profit activities using the, using the district's equipment or district's Internet, and I don't really look at it as trying to forbid ever going to amazon.com and shopping, because the district itself uses amazon.com to purchase things as a place to buy some stuff. Or office deeper.
Okay.
That example just makes me very uncomfortable in terms of how it could be used to, in a punitive fashion, so, I mean, that's my, my take on it.
We could look at making some revisions to it if we'd like to table it till next month.
Make a motion to table.
Eventually, these have to go into the handbook, right? I mean, we have to get these signed. I know it's not, we probably have another month, but that's about it. But, yeah, we're, we were trying to.
I'd like to make a motion to table this particular policy.
I mean, is that the particular section that we want to revise, or are there any other sections?
No, I'm fine with the pornography and all of that, it's part of it.
I guess we have to just get clear direction, though, as to what we're, what exactly we're modifying, and if it's our goal, are we going, you know, to do that, because that's what we were attempting to try to do the last time, so.
Is this compared to, like, the PSBA? Do they have, I don't have it here right now, but I was just thinking.
They do, yeah, they have a policy. I mean, I guess.
That's where that is derived from, we pretty much changed it from there.
Yeah, I mean, right.
They've made some changes, minor changes to it.
I would guess the Black Queen is probably, you know, underlying.
The PSBA.
PSBA's, and then we have some other, I mean, it seems to me that the question is whether you want to continue to say that particular commercial websites are specifically banned, or whether you want to rely on your filters to be able to sort of pre-select those, which would basically leave you not necessarily needing to specifically call them out. I mean, that's really the question.
Well, in addition to that, if you notice the policy from PSBA, it says students and minors, and we've changed it to be all users.
Right. I mean, I'll be honest with you, there are a lot of places that will have an acceptable use policy that applies to students, and then separately, an acceptable use policy that applies to staff, because frankly, the issues aren't always the same.
I think I would be much more comfortable with that.
But I think we're in a.
Well, then, I guess the question, though, really comes down, so that we could do it right, is, is the board saying that you feel that it would be okay for other than students to use the technology to purchase, resell, and for-profit opportunities during or after the school day? I mean, because if so, then I think you would separate it.
I think for-profit is always a bad thing. If you buy.
If you buy Microsoft software, Microsoft Office for students, it always says it's for nonprofit type things. So I don't think it's appropriate to be using school board, school district devices for profit.
I think when you had a policy a long time ago, and this may just be my opinion, I'll, I'll just say it like this, and it could be completely inaccurate, but a long time ago, I think some people, not everyone had computers, phones were phones, they weren't computers in your hand. So sometimes there was more of a need from some people to view it as that, that you needed to use this for personal use, although I'm not sure I would have agreed with it then. But at any rate, now, I would say that, I couldn't say all, but I would say probably a majority of the folks have some access to, to be able to do most of these things on their own. You know, Wi-Fi, whether that's home or on your phone, et cetera. I won't say all, but I would say many people probably do. So I think that component of it's less of an issue. So it really comes down to using the district Wi-Fi and using the district's technology for profit or commercial purposes as it says there. I mean, if you want to differ that, then I think that's the question. Then we know what to write. I mean, that's really what we got to know. If that's what you want to change, specifically it says staff is allowed to do that, then we'll know, we can change it.
I don't see it, but that's, I would say-
I personally don't feel that our, our staff should be using our district resources to make a profit either, so.
As I said, I think it can be combined as, as a, in my opinion, based on what we're talking about that.
I, I understand the concerns of it being subjective, but I-
You know, maybe in this, maybe there's a narrower category, so maybe it's not all shopping, but, you know, like even blocking the most popular sites. At least sends a message, because when people try it and it's blocked, it's going to be a reminder that they shouldn't do it. Like, you know, eBay, Craigslist and those.
But you have to understand, blocking doesn't work. I mean-
No, I realize, it's not going to be a hundred percent effective.
I took a Cisco course down at WVU about ten years ago, and at that time, they had fifty thousand lines of allow and deny code in their router. So you could, you're always running behind if you're trying to deal things, do things that way.
And I do, I do have concerns with blocking shopping, like Amazon and stuff, because we do have a lot of our staff members that spend their own money on resources for the classroom or for the students, and I don't want to prohibit them or penalize them for doing that. So.
I think the bigger issue than using a Chromebook is using university or school district resources on, on the Internet because that, we keep having to upgrade that, we keep running short on that. If it's faculty, they're using time that shouldn't be spent doing that, they're using our time. So I have more of a problem with what's being done on, on site rather than what's at home.
I'm actually okay with the language that was added to say, create access or otherwise generate income that was provided, because that kind of specifies that our staff can use it, can go on those sites, but they can't generate an income from the use of those sites.
Well, Amazon's okay, but even-
There is a category of sites in here that is Craigslist, eBay and stuff like that that probably you have no reason to be on it during the day or ever, it's for profit. At least blocking, I realize blocking them will not be effective, but it will be a reminder because this policy is going to go on the website someday and nobody's going to read it, and so nobody's going to really know. And so, at least enforcing it through the firewall is a way to remind people continuously.
Well, and I agree with you very, but, I mean, in addition to that, like, for example, on page three, students, if students come into the building with their own computer or phone, student-owned or assigned devices once in the district building may not be allowed to connect to an outside network or personal hotspot in an attempt to circumvent district-owned filtering hardware or software. So if a student has their phone and they just haven't perchance logged in to the Wi-Fi in the building, they are in violation of this policy.
I think the key here is that-
Because they, because if they're, if they're connecting to their own, I don't know. Do you understand, does anyone understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Which one is that?
I do under-
It's on page three.
I do understand what you're saying, which was a concern of ours when we were trying to write that. But in the same idea, what we're also trying to do is be protective of these devices, too, so that we can block some of those sites.
Right. And I understand the, the school district device, but this is student-owned devices. So that's their phones or anything they bring into the school district, like an iPad or whatever. If they are connected, if they are connected to the Internet not through the school district, they're in violation of this policy.
Well, not necessarily-
Enforcement of that would be difficult, to your point. But in the same idea, making it, I agree with that. We had a conversation about that. But I would also say that by encourage, by stating in the policy that you should be on there prevents them getting on things that they should not and showing others.
Right.
I mean, it does say specifically, if you're doing it in an attempt to circumvent district-owned filtering hardware. So I, I think that the language would imply that if you do it accidentally, you're not in violation of policy, but if you're doing it with an intent to try to get around the filtering software, then that's when you run afoul of the policy. So what do you guys want us to do with the policy? Do you want us to revise it or?
I actually said we should table it. Don't we have to, don't we have to do something about my motion to table it?
There was a motion to table, so.
I need a second to the motion, then. Because there's no second.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to table policy eight fifteen has been made by Mrs. Dobus and seconded by Mr. Nagel. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
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 I guess do a roll call, I can tell.
Mr. Ammitz.
Are you in favor of tabling policy eight fifteen, Mr. Ammitz?
No.
Mrs. Buckley.
Mrs. Buckley, are you in favor of tabling policy eight fifteen?
Lost it.
We might, we may have lost. Mrs. Buckley? Okay, we lost. Mrs. Buckley said it. Oh, no, okay. No, okay, thank you, sorry.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mrs. Cook.
No.
Mrs. Dobus.
Yes.
Mr. Means.
No.
Mr. Nagel.
No.
Mrs. Rule.
No.
Mr. Workmeister.
No.
Motion failed.
Table fails. Two to seven. So we're back to the motion as stated.
I would just like us to investigate some of the IP filtering. I don't know what the policies are, but that's the reason why I thought we should take some more time to, to think it through because we have that where I work. You know, all kinds of IP filters that protect, you know, keep you off of, you know, gun sites and shopping and stuff like that. It works in the commercial world, so I think we should look into blocking some of those.
And you do have certain things that we block, I know that.
Okay.
Block like Craigslist is blocked.
Okay.
All right. Mrs. Cook.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make the comment that this doesn't necessarily have to be permanent. I mean, we tend to pass our policies and leave them that way for a long time, but if there's a need to modify it or somebody comes up with better wording, we could modify that rather quickly.
Right, and we've had this out there for, this is the third reading and final reading, and the other issue being it needs to go into the handbook. I, I think as it sits, coupled with looking into the firewall and forcing the firewall with better, I think that, I think the policy states kind of what we want it to do, what we're hoping to achieve, so then it can be put out there to the, to the students and staff while still enforcing that, I believe. Any other discussion on this before we take a vote on the policy? All in favor of policy eight fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
All.
Opposed?
Aye.
That carries eight to one. Mr. Means?
Okay, there's two more items under the policy committee. Item number two, policy revision, first of three readings. That's policy one fifty, Title One, comparability of service. And this is, should be voted on for approval on June twenty-fifth. And the third one is approval of policy, first of three readings, on policy seven oh two point one, crowdfunding, and that also should be voted on for final approval on June twenty-fifth.
And we have those on the website, correct? They're out in review. I didn't get to discuss other with everyone, but we have typically appointed Mrs. Rule, and I did ask her if she would be our PSBA delegate. Are you okay with me filling that in for, with her and us passing that because it has to be submitted to them by a certain date, I think? So I will make the motion that the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to appoint Connie Rule to be voting delegate at the PSBA Delegate Assembly meeting in October twenty nineteen and submit the appropriate response form to PSBA by June twenty-eighth. I need a second.
Second.
Item one, under other, has been moved by Mrs. Cook and seconded by Mr. Christensen. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. We are now at the point of public comments on anything you wish to address the board on this evening. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please.
Ken Crowley, twenty twenty Millennium Court. Here tonight to address an issue that was brought before the board at this time last year but was quickly negated according to the almanac by the majority of the board as a normal fluctuation. As many parents of incoming kindergarten students are attending our children's orientations, we are quickly finding out that the influx of a higher number of kindergarten students in a certain schools is not a fluctuation as some would have us believe, but a new regularity. Based on what I've been able to ascertain from those in the community who have attended these orientations, I can confidently say that there's a vast discrepancy for students who will be attending Ben Franklin, Lincoln and Memorial Elementary Schools this fall. For instance, based on class size information shared in orientations, there are anywhere from sixty-four to sixty-eight kindergarten students enrolled at those three elementary schools for this upcoming school year. Those students are looking at average class size of twenty-two to twenty-three students per section. However, their peers at Penn and Washington are facing significantly lower class sizes. Presently, there are only eleven to twelve students per section at Penn and only fourteen to fifteen students per section at Washington. Years of research clearly shows that the average kindergarten class size should be around eighteen students. Currently, there are fourteen sections of kindergarten offered across the district. If you average those with these approximate numbers, you would be able to see the district's staff at approximately eighteen point six students per section, which is just slightly above the research-supported number of eighteen students per section. Whether we agree with that number or not, we should at least all be able to come to a common ground and ascertain that it is not fair to the majority of our children to be faced with class sizes of twenty-two to twenty-three students in kindergarten while their peers are given well below that number. The administration and the board should have been privy to a long-term demographic study that predicted this large discrepancy in enrollment. Maybe the board and the administration already has a plan in place that's not been shared with parents about how to address, address this lack of equity for all their kindergarten students. If so, I ask that it be shared with parents as soon as possible. If not, I ask that the board direct administration to explore the feasibility of shifting staff to address this discrepancy or explore the feasibility of increasing some of our part-time kindergarten staff to full-time. These employees already receive benefits and the increase in their salaries could easily be absorbed into the budget or be addressed to the district's significant surplus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Kelly Tatum, fifty-eight oh six, Irishtown Road. See something, say something has been taught to our kids in regards to bullying. Unfortunately, I've experienced my own son, who is a senior at Bethel Park High School, be bullied by the head varsity baseball coach, the hitting coach and other members of the baseball team. Because I have seen something, I must say something. The head coach of the varsity baseball team has created a culture of toxicity and bullying. He has repeatedly berated players, picking softball girls' names and calling the players these girls' names. He has ignored those he doesn't like. He has swore constantly at the players. He's created an environment in which the other staff feel comfortable insulting the players. His hitting coach called my son an effing loser in front of the players and the other coaches. My husband reported this behavior to the athletic director. We have just, I don't want to go off my script, but we have talked to the athletic director, we have talked to the principal, we have talked to the superintendent, and here we are today. The superintendent, well, my, let me go back. My husband quit the baseball, my, my son quit the baseball team this year after being on it since he was in ninth grade. The superintendent became aware of the coaching incident and thank you, the hitting coach immediately was released from his duties. But the boys have gotten so mad that this has happened, especially as they were going into playoffs, and began harassing my son via texting in a group chat, which they eventually threw him out of. And Cody, a ninth grader, a ninth grader, knew what to do, copied the text and sent them to my son, which we have a copy of one of the boys on the baseball team saying they are going to kill my son. That freshman, Cody, who his mom is here to speak tonight, got pulled into a separate room and was reprimanded by the varsity head coach, while the other, other coaches stood by doing nothing. And he was told that he was too young to be involved in this and that he was wrong for what he had done and could get the boys in a lot of trouble. So Cody saw something, he did something and got berated by the head varsity coach, who is also a teacher at Bethel Park High School. The coaches told the rest of the boys that they better side with the coaches because they are the ones that can get them interviews with college coaches and will propel their baseball career. My son's senior banquet banner has been stolen by kids from the cafeteria and they were caught on cam, on camera. I have no idea what happened with that. My son has not been in school for the past three weeks. He was just told that he didn't have to come back to school. He is afraid of what the boys would do. We're not going to graduation because I don't want kids yelling at my son. The baseball team had a consolation game tonight to see if they could clinch a playoff spot. So while the community cheers them on, there is so much corruption and toxicity that the community knows nothing about or they would not be cheering. At least, I hope not. I ask that you will fire the head coach of the varsity baseball team and, and a history teacher. He has no place whatsoever teaching and coaching when he berates those who see something and say something. He tolerates coaches who berate players and he himself promotes a culture of bullying. I ask that something be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Tatum, fifty-eight oh six.
Sir, I just, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, please don't use any student names if you're going to make any comments about the baseball situation, only because we don't want to discuss specific students here in a public meeting.
Sure. Thank you. So I'd like to thank all of you for the great responsibility that you have leading this district. Chuck Tatum, hopefully you know that name. I've sent a few emails out in regards to baseball and the baseball updates. Thank you to those that have responded. I appreciate that. My wife just spoke, and this is a big issue. This is an issue bigger than just one son, but it's an issue of several sons that have gone through athletics here at Bethel Park. The one coach that, that has been mentioned, something needs to be done about. In my email to you, I was very clear in what I would like to see happen. Anything less than that, I believe, is unacceptable. I'm proud of my son and what he did and others that have stepped forward to do something He's eighteen years old. I commend him publicly for what he has done. He quit a team that was heading into the playoffs. Another boy on the team quit that team heading into the playoffs. Something's wrong with that. That is unacceptable. That should not be happening. I hope that this is not happening in other sporting teams here in Bethel Park. We know it to be true in the baseball program. Something's wrong with that, that is unacceptable, that should not be happening. I hope that this is not happening in other sporting teams here in Bethel Park. We know it to be true in the baseball program. We, we can't let this go on any longer. This is my first time being at this meeting, thank you for letting me speak, and I thank you in advance for the difficult, very difficult decision that you have to make, and I know in your hearts, you know what the right thing is to do. So I thank you ahead of time for doing what is right, not only for my son, for sons that will be talked about this evening, and for all the young kids that are looking forward to playing baseball at the high school level. That's a big responsibility they carry, and, and exciting time that they look forward to, and I want it to be an exciting time, not a time like my son had to endure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Carrie Gettis, forty-eight, fourteen, Chris Road. Um, I'm backing Mrs. Tatum and Mr. Tatum, pretty much have covered everything that I was gonna say. My son Cody is the freshman who, uh, stood up when he saw that Tatum was being treated bad. Um, he is a two-hundred-and-fifteen-pound, fourteen-year-old who has played football and basketball already for the high school, and was very excited when he was chosen to be on the varsity baseball team this spring. That was quickly, his excitement was quickly diminished when he was getting into the car crying, saying how stupid he felt after practice, and how he feels that he is not a good baseball player, because he was told so, and, um, at this point, it's just, you know, it was almost a sigh of relief when he quit the team, because after how they treated, you know, his teammate, um, and then the coaches, how they treated, you know, Cody, that was not a team he was proud to be on. Um, he wanted nothing to do with the team, um, whenever he would hear about them being in the playoffs and winning a game, he showed, you know, that was not proud, he was not proud one bit about it. Um, he heard, he has heard many, many stories. Um, my four brothers went through the baseball program when they were college, or in high school, my brother was on the eighty-eight team that won the States, another of, one of my brothers is on the athletic wall, um, in the gym, and that, he has heard so many good stories about the Bethel baseball organization back then, but we cannot, we don't share the same, there's not one good story that we have coming out of it right now, and, um, that's very unfortunate. And, uh, I just hope that you guys really look at this, and it has taken two very courageous young men, um, one being a senior going out of the program, one being a freshman who pretty much has just, um, written off baseball for the high school if nothing is done, um, he will not probably be allowed to play or be treated fairly on the team. Um, so, he, you know, he knew that was a possibility, he knew that his, you know, Bethel Blackhawk days as a baseball player could be over, and he was fine with that, because he just knows if it continues the way it is, it's not something to be proud of to be on. So I do hope that you guys, you know, take all this into consideration and think of all those kids that are coming up through the years, that something needs to change so that these kids can once again be proud of being a Bethel Park Blackhawk again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did I see a scout maybe out there? Are you doing something for scouting? No? Okay. Thought, I thought maybe you were working on a badge. Any board comments?
I have one, uh, just because it's one day after Memorial Day, and, um, if we had our meeting last week, we would have been able to say, you know, happy Memorial Day, so it's, it's a day late, but nonetheless, well deserved to say, you know, help.
Thank you.
We thank you to all the veterans for, you know, all you've done, and, uh, yeah, so happy Memorial Day, and that's...
Thank you.
I'd say congratulations to our fellow board member for organizing a, uh, a, a nice program at the park and everything, parade. Good job, Ken.
The program and everything was organized by other people, I just got people in line at the parade.
Okay.
But thank you.
Anyone else?
Does this do any?
Yes, Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you. I'd just like to say happy summer to all of our staff, this is for thousands of students, and I'll start to go congratulations to every member of the class of twenty seventeen, wishing you the best of luck in your future.
Thank you.
I would like to, uh, address a lot of the comments that were just made, uh, I'm not going to address specifics, uh, but I would say that extracurricular activities should be focused on building character, integrity, teamwork, and confidence, no matter what the activity across this district is. Uh, I trust that this is happening in most cases, if it is found it is not the case, it should be dealt with swiftly. Uh, that's my feelings on that. I want to congratulate all of the exceptional achievements of our students, uh, I know there are several of them looking forward to their graduation, and, uh, I also want to just let everybody know that, uh, the time and date has not been set, but there will be another town hall meeting this summer, uh, to give you all a chance to give feedback to board members who want to participate, uh, but other than that, thank you all for coming and attending.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have two comments. One, school board is a very low form of, uh, the government, but it is government, and there are procedures that we have to follow, and things that arise, not just the subject from tonight, are very difficult to deal with, there's procedures you have to go through, you can't just make things happen immediately. And there's a lot of things that we know are going on, we can't say, there's different rules, you can't say certain things about employees, you can't say certain things about students, and a lot of times, the school board shouldn't even know the facts of what's going on, because people have appeals to the school board as a judge, and we aren't supposed to be predisposed to judge one way or another before it comes to us. So it's not that, it's not that we don't care, we do care, but we're limited, and we have to follow certain procedures to do things. The other thing, I'll make the comment I usually make every year, and that is, uh, there's two days in the school year when everybody's caught up, the first day of school and the last day of school, so pretty soon, everybody's gonna be caught up for one of the two times a year, so congratulations.
Thanks. Anybody else? I need a motion to adjourn now.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.